Okay, thank you, Jason. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, first, like a roll call, please.
Uh, Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Up here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Corman.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, first up, we have a public hearing. Uh, Jan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pavoni. The city is required to hold public hearings prior to the adoption of the biennial budget and the setting of the property tax levy for the coming year. The first public hearing was held on June 1st. The second was held on October 5th. Tonight represents the third and final public hearing. All of our public hearings have been appropriately noticed and provide opportunity for stakeholders to provide input. The proposed 2021 and 2022 budget has citywide revenues of $494.2 million and expenditures of $507.5 million for the biennial and a proposed property tax levy of $22.7 million for 2021. Additional detail regarding the city's proposed budget can be found on the city's website at RentonWA.gov/budget. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor Pavoni.
Okay, thank you. Any comment or question? Okay, next up, we have an administrative report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you gotta ask, uh, for audience comments?
Oh, audience comments, sorry. Do we have audience comments?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, my name is Julia Madzigian. I'm the City Council Liaison. I have two people signed up in advance to speak to the public hearing. When I call your name, I will unmute you and you will have up to five minutes to address the City Council. First, I have... Sorry, I'm looking to make sure that the people that signed up in advance are still, are signed in. Okay. Looks like... Paul Lawley. Mr. Lawley, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, Council and Mr. Mayor, my name is Paul Lawley. I am the President and CEO of Friends of Youth. Uh, we are one of the people who, uh, you've recommended funding for. That would be for our homeless youth services, uh, for the east side. So Friends of Youth is the primary provider of, uh, homeless services for, uh, youth and young adults from the ages of under 18 all the way to 24. And these are, these are young, youth and young adults experiencing homelessness. So thank you very much to the city and the Human Services Commission for your continued support of young people experiencing homelessness in both our crisis response services as well as our transitional living programs. Your funding has supported shelter for both, uh, again, like I said, under 18 and 18 to 24. And 2020, Friends of You served, uh, over 2,700 people in our region. With your partnership, a total of 703 unduplicated youth and young adults at our youth centers received shelter, drop-in, street outreach, and KDS management services. Uh, the young people assessing our services are disproportionately youth of color and LGBTQ A- youth. We offer drop-in services seven days a week in order for young people to basically access needs, items, case management, behavioral health, medical care, and ultimately have a safe place to go in the midst of a crisis. We also continue to operate our 20-bed young adult program, seven days per week, 365 days throughout the year, for a total of 6,000 bed nights to help support young people experiencing homelessness, obtain the resources they need to move towards stability, including a safe place to sleep nightly. In order to accommodate social distancing guidelines, unfortunately, we've had to reduce, uh, our number of beds to 15 and offer both virtual and in-person support. We continue to remain open seven days a week and are gradually increasing our hours of staffing to ensure 24/7 access to services. We have 47 units of transitional supporting, supportive housing located in East King County. We serve 218 unduplicated young people with vital housing services this past fiscal year. We know that your partnership will, will be able to continue to support young people experiencing homelessness, uh, reach their goals, and continue towards, uh, towards housing stability. Your support and funding is imperative to ensuring that generations of young people all have what they need to achieve personal success. Really, on behalf of the board, the staff, and the entire Friends of You family, uh, we appreciate you, uh, your, your, your funding, and we will continue to do the work on the land, Breton. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up in advance to speak to council. If you're in the audience and you'd like to address the council, please raise your hand via the computer. If you've called in on the telephone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. When I call your name, I will unmute you and you will have up to five minutes to address the council. Next, I have Diane Dobson. Go ahead, Diane.
Thanks very much. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Wonderful, thank you, Julia. I'm Diane Dobson, a Renton resident and CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I also serve on approximately 25 different boards and commissions, most of which are benefiting the city of Renton in some capacity: human services, economic development, school and education, a whole plethora of, of commissions. And I come to you tonight wearing a little bit of all of those hats and not just representing one entity and likely not speaking for any, if that makes any sense at all. 2020, what a year. And I speak from my own perspective that I was thrilled at the new year upon us. The year that we had lots of new excitement about new things, a new police chief, new leadership in various entities around the city, new administration and new council. And I can imagine that a number of you at the city may have had similar excitement as well. And who would have known? We certainly have had new excitement, but nothing like we ever would have imagined or envisioned. I don't know if there is a day that has passed since March 14th where I haven't heard the terms unprecedented or pivot. And in my position at the chamber, I have the very unique opportunity to learn in depth many of the challenges that are faced in the various industries. And I've learned that the city and the various departments is no different. In fact, on many levels, I would say that your job is more challenging than most, as your advocacy in transition is not just one business, but many businesses, 104,000 constituents, and you have had a barrage of challenges that we're not just aware of on a public level, but many behind-the-scenes items that the public might not even have privy to. And first and foremost, I say thank you. Thank you for your continued leadership and your continued service during this time. And now with a sampling of many hats and a plethora of different lenses, and having heard all of the briefings that have come forward to the Committee of the Whole and having conversations myself to further learn and understand the processes, I reach out to the council tonight about the 2021 and 2022 biennial budget. First, thank you to the Finance Committee and Jan Conne and her department for the diligent work they put into the preparation of the same. The budgeting process is a tiresome and thankless process in any given year, let alone with the challenges faced this year and the unpredictability with what the future might hold on so many levels. Second, a balanced budget. Thank you for your priority to creating a balanced budget as we move forward. We recognize there have been sacrifices made by the city as you've moved forward in order to achieve that balanced budget, and we thank you. To the administration and to the staff, and to everyone doing more than their part, to sacrifice and achieve the same on behalf of the community you serve. Third, human services. The need for human services going forward will undeniably be huge. And I was glad to hear tonight the council's approach for a potential review and revisit to that budget, as the CIR's funding expiring at the end of this year will only provide a temporary bandage on the services that are going to be needed moving forward. I urge the city of Renton and the individual council members to help advocate for an agreement on a federal level that can hopefully provide more funding to not just our businesses who desperately need it and still so many that have not received it, but also for the human services as there are business doors closing, additional stimulus and support that hasn't yet arrived, some people still haven't received unemployment because of the fraud on the system and other human service needs. I thank the city for your cognizant awareness of these issues, and I look forward to not only the evaluation of the same, but that opportunity for a reevaluation that might provide a more equitable lens, review and response to funds as they're distributed, and in a responsible lens, to be assured those funding options are wisely distributed on demonstrated and proven causes, but not necessarily in federate distribution, to assure their relevancy and approach as funds will be so limited and sparse. And I encourage you to utilize the Human Services Advisory Commission as well as to reach out to the service providers who are doing the work to afford them a seat at the table as you explore uncharted territories with, again, unprecedented times. Fourth, public approach. Thank you for the service provided by not just our first responders with public safety, but our Public Works crews as well. The Public Works is the behind-the-scenes crews that keeps our city functioning, and we don't realize the value of until we don't have them. And our public safety, we in Renton are fortunate to have a police department and fire authority that are recognized on a national level for their positive and proactive approach, their intentional response, and their compassionate understanding for a need of different type of enforcement. At a time when our national news shares a story that can be quite frightening, thank you for your continued emphasis to support those who have brought great comfort to the general public, and on behalf of the businesses, nonprofits, and residents, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight and for your continued services, appreciated.
Okay, next we have Paul Tibbles Riley. Go ahead, Paul.
Hi. Also ask, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good evening, Mayor Pavoni, President Perez, and councilors. My name is Paul Tibbles Riley. I teach and shop in Renton. I live just outside of Renton in unincorporated King County. I support the Stand for Justice budget demands outlined by Renton Residents for Change and Renton King County Alliance for Justice. As a teacher, I'm particularly passionate about budget demand, too, creating an anti-racist budget by directing revenue to social services and basic needs. Specifically, also the one around case managers should be hired to help with mental health. I've seen the difference this can make in the lives of students and families. My school has amazing families that work incredibly hard to make sure their students have everything they need and support their students' education. Most of my students are of color, and their families have faced barriers such as their own experiences of trauma, systemic racism, and food insecurity. I've seen the difference that counseling services can make for families and students. I've seen the relief on families' faces when they know they and their children get extra help processing and finding solutions with a counselor or a social worker. I've seen the immense difference our school counselors make in checking in and supporting families in need. Yet I know that with government budgets running thin, counseling and social services can have long wait times, large caseloads, and offer few hours to families. This is one of the many reasons why it's crucial that our city continues to invest in mental health services for residents. I support budget demand, too, creating an anti-racist budget by directing revenue to social services and basic needs. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Dr. Linda Smith. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, thank you. To Honorable Mayor Amman Pavoni and Chairperson Council Ruth Perez and City Council Member, I am Dr. Linda Smith, Renton resident. In all due respect, I am disappointed, uh, tonight from the Committee of the Whole conversation that once again silenced the voice of the Black community from the process to advocate for the issues that involved us. The absence of the line item in the budget that is reflective of meeting the needs of all of these residents, including marginalized, particularly those who also marginalized in our community through homelessness, economic, education, and inequity. This budget was the one opportunity to address historical wrongdoing and to continue to bring about justice for all, leaving no one behind. In order to change this long history of injustice that have dramatically and severely impacted Black, Indigenous, and people of color, a commitment must be made. But yet, in, in review of the line items of the budget, there is no mention of the RISE program, and then a group of people will discuss it without our input. RISE is a program that is known as an inclusive American dream fund, where Black and Indigenous communities have a fair shot at home ownership and achieving their American dream, as the dream has never been accessible to them due to the structural and institutional racism and oppressive laws and policies that has had its foot on our necks for far too long. These historical wrongdoing crippled these communities for generations, and the passing of wealth and social and economic mobility is not accessible. To absent the RISE program for the budget is a slap in the face to the Black community. And once again, the check has been returned with insufficient fund. We don't need another group to tell us what's best for our lives. How can someone tell us what is best for us when you've never walked in our shoes? To take the RISE program and absent the Black community voice that brought the proposal forth is utterly, totally disrespectful to the Renton King County Alliance for Justice and the Renton Resident for Change. It is the same old game, that Black lives do not matter, and the system is one who always, it feels that they're in the best position to make decisions for us as a Black community. What this just told us is that you do not care about the Black community. But we stand tonight as committed as ever to bring about change and eradicate the lone standing injustices that have impacted Black, Indigenous communities here in the city of Renton in this country. For some, this country has been the land of milk and honey, the place where dreams come true, their American dream. So many immigrants have arrived to this country and etched a name for themselves inside our history books for their accomplishment. But for those who look like me, Blacks, uh, our ancestors, this nation has bequested us with prison sales, premature death, a date of life for terrorism, malnutrition opportunities that lapidated a stolen community. It has been a land of the buy-and-buy for many generations, and yet, here we are again at a real fork in the road for real change, the narrative that plays itself out over and over again when it comes to African-Americans, a promise yet unfulfilled. So I beg the question, if not when? When we will see an end to injustice and things are made right with the Black community? The anti-racist policy is no more than words on a piece of paper if the historical wrongs are not right. Words mean more than what is said down on paper. It takes the human voice to infuse them with deep meaning. Who is this America for? Is it not for the Black, the Indigenous, and people of color? Who gets to decide what the life of the Black person should look like? The system has, has had its foot on our neck, and we can't breathe. But we're not going anyplace. We've come a long ways and united in hope. We believe today in standing on the foundation that justice stands on the side of the oppressed. We will not grow weary. We will not be silent. We believe that we shall overcome, and together we will continue to rise and rise and rise. I don't need to repeat the four budget demands that we have come for many weeks, because obviously, our voice has meant nothing. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Krista. Go ahead, Krista. Krista, did you want to address the council in the public hearing?
I do, just a, a moment. Um, I'm, I'm taking in what Dr. Linda has shared with us. I hope, even though we all aren't connected in a room right now, that we're all taking a moment to feel what she just shared. Thank you, Dr. Linda.
Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, President Perez, and council members. My name is Krista Strasva, and I'm a Renton resident. As in weeks past, I am speaking tonight to express my support for the Stand for Justice budget demands presented to you by Renton Residents for Change and the Renton King County Alliance for Justice. Tonight, I'd like to call your attention to budget demand number two, just as Paul did, establish an anti-racist budget. As I understand, the city's biennial budget is not set in stone. It can be amended anytime during these next two years before the next budget is created. And I'm asking that you consider recent events similar to the event that led to our local movement in conjunction with the National Uprising for Black Lives, the murder of George Floyd. There are a lot of things to be proud of here in Renton, and I hope that striving toward anti-racism will become one of them. The collective work we have before us to dismantle white supremacy has never been so clear, but it doesn't just exist on a national level. On Friday, another Black man was killed by police in Vancouver, Washington, just only about two and a half hours from where we sit tonight. His name was Kevin Peterson Jr., a 21-year-old friend, son, and father to his four-month-old child. And just a month before that, a motorist shouting "All Lives Matter" in Renton threatened and pointed a gun at artists of color working right here on southeast Petrovsky Road. We could spend all night examining these events and honoring, honoring the lives impacted, but what I'm hoping is that we honor them instead through our immediate actions by shifting power through the redistribution of funds. Will you share your power? Are you willing to challenge status quo? There need be another headline, one more vigil, one more lost life. It's past time. So please, listen to community and create an anti-racist budget by directing revenue to social services and basic needs, including reducing restrictions used to criminalize Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities, a focus on mental health supports, and alternatives for youth that prevent the school-to-prison pipeline. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Joseph Todd. Go ahead, Joseph.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, so, good evening, uh, Mayor Pavoni, um, Council President Ruth Perez and council members. My heart's broken, um, just listening to, um, Dr. Linda's voice and urging you to place Black Lives Matter in this budget and to show us that Black lives do matter. As a council, you approved Resolution 41, 4414, which adopt, which is adopted for 2021 Business Plan to strengthen the city's stand against racism in support of racial equity. And you did that on August 3rd, 2020. Those are idle words in that resolution if you don't put budget to it. It doesn't make any sense. I could, just like Dr. Linda said, I could read all four of these to you again. You all know what they are. But I just don't understand how we've been coming here, week after week. We've been talking. I mean, Councilmember Perez, we even had a discussion on Saturday to talk to you more and more, to give you a better understanding of what we're looking for, what we're asking for. And I just don't understand why we, none of this has even been brought up in the business plan. Uh, I'm sorry, not a business plan, but up for business for discussion, to go into more detail and really understand what this really means for the community. Uh, do we have to wait for something bad to happen in order to start implementing some of this stuff? Does, does, does some Black man here have to be killed? Tell me. I, I just don't understand. We're, we're asking you to, with your hearts and with your minds and with your souls, to look at this budget and let this budget speak of your values. Just like Councilmember Benedetti said, the budget speaks the values of the council. And are you telling the community that you don't value Black lives? Because if that's what you're saying, I understand that. And then that helps me to move into next year when it's time to vote. And then I'll, and, and then I'll vote and let you know how I feel with my vote. But are you telling me Black lives don't matter? Are you telling me that you don't care about engaging the Black community? Are you telling me that you don't see us? Are you saying that the stuff that we're asking for is too much? It's not. It is not too much. It is the right thing to do. We haven't been coming here to, to get on the news or get our names in a newspaper. We're trying to make sure that the people who look like us in the future will have a better chance at life. That's all this is about. That's all this is about. And are you telling me that that doesn't matter to you? If that's the case, then say it on the dais, and I'm good to go. Then I understand where we stand. But if that's not where you're standing, then why is the end of this stuff being discussed in this forum? Help me, help me understand that. Why, how come every time it comes to Black lives, we have to hurry, have to wait? Every time? There's always some excuse. We don't have enough budget. We're doing all that we can. Our police department is award-winning. They haven't shot anybody in 10 years. I mean, those aren't excuses to engage the Black community and let them know that you care. I, I simply don't understand why this, why this, why we can't talk about these demands, why we can't have some real conversation around them, and why you can't show that you value Black lives and you value the lives of people of color by talking about these specific demands. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Prianna Smith. Go ahead, Prianna.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, good evening, Mayor Pavoni, President Perez, and council members. My name is Prianna Smith. I am a Renton resident. I am speaking tonight to express my support of Stand for Justice budget demands and request that the City, uh, Council refer their creation to city administration as official business. Tonight, I come to you in the spirit of tired feet, sore back muscles, and in no way tired attitude. Sometimes when my body is tired and my heart is heavy, I review the words to the Black National Anthem, Lift Every Voice, and I quote, "Stony the road we trod, bitter the chasting rod, felt in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with the steady beat, have not our weary feet come to the place for which our fathers sighed." Those words remind me that I am the legacy and the dream hoped for by the generations before me, yet also they remind me how far we as a community need to go. My family imprinted on me education as empowerment and home ownership as real status. I want my hard work to be fruitful, and the RISE program is needed. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council regarding the biennial budget? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, Tree Williams.
Hello, my name is Tree Williams, and I'm here with Whitney, and we are both residents for Renton, excuse me, and, um, I'd like to introduce myself formally. The council members, Mayor Pavone, and I, too, we both support the RISE program. It's only right that we at least take a look at it and let's talk about it and let's start to make those small incremental changes so Renton can be ahead of the curve and Black people can start to breathe like everybody else, along with Indigenous and Brown folks. And yeah, I'm gonna keep it straight and simple. Renton, we gotta step it up. Thank y'all for y'all's time.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council regarding the budget? I see no more, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Julia. Uh, Jason, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
For the council, yes, President Perez.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
The move by Councilmember, or by President, Council, President Perez, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we need discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, before, uh, for, for having a discussion, uh, on the budget, uh, for purpose of a... uh, for purpose of a discussion, I'm going to, uh, given that the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna move that the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report, um, at this time.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report. Um, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yeah, Member Van.
Sorry, for some reason I can't see my hand raise function. Uh, but yes, um, I think there is a lot to discuss. And certainly, this is just an adoption of the, um, biennial budget. Uh, and then there's opportunities for amendments. Uh, but have, have been, uh, haven't discussed the matter in how, and hearing some of our council members concerned as well uh, for staff support and, uh, the, uh, need to hear community voice and concern. And as we hear from community today, uh, I, uh, motion to amend the, uh, biennial budget, uh, by adding the RISE program to be funded, um, and at the amount of $50,000. It is a nominal amount. Uh, certainly, I've heard some council members, uh, saying that there is no appetite. I s- I think that for us to speak truth to our Renton Business Plan as well as to understand more about the RISE program and that we have, um, we show that, and again, it's a nominal amount, to show that our skin is in the game. Uh, so I'm motion to amend the biennial budget by adding the RISE program to, uh, be funded.
Okay. Uh, see no second. Um, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, uh, with concurring with the committee, the whole, um, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose me?
I'm sorry.
Oppose me?
Nay.
Jason. Yes, so the, uh, do you want me to read the report?
Uh, yes, let's read the report.
Okay. So, uh, the committee of the whole committee report is for the 2021-2022 biennial budget. The committee of the whole reviewed the administration-proposed 2021-2022 budget in the amount of $248,995,124 and $258,462,306 for 2021 and 2022 respectively, and recommends concurrence in the following actions. One, the property tax levy. Set the 2021 property tax levy using the preliminary property tax worksheet provided by King County, showing estimated property taxes of $22,705,92, which includes new construction, annexation, re-levying, uh, refunds, and levierer, and find a substantial need to increase the property tax limit factor above the rate of inflation to 1% for a total limit factor of 101%. Two, other rates and fee adjustments. Adjust various fees as identified and read in the proposed fee schedule located in Section 7, Appendix of the Proposed Budget. Uh, three, 2021 Index of Positions and Pay Raises. Authorize the non-represented employees' positions and pay raises for 2021 as identified in the 2021 Index of Positions and Pay ranges located in Section 7, Appendix of the Proposed Budget. And the union contracts for represented employees end on December 31st, 2020, and are pending negotiation. And then four, finally, legislation. Approve the 2021-2022 proposed budget actions listed, uh, above. Draft and present the related legislation for reading at the council's regular meeting on November 2nd, which is tonight. Uh, that is all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is audience com- no, it's administrative report.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, three items. The city has launched our age-friendly Renton Community Survey. The survey covers housing, transportation, outdoor spaces, and other services. Your input will help guide future policies designed to make neighborhoods safe and walkable while supporting he- health, well-being, and participation for all Renton residents. The survey takes less than 15 minutes to complete and will be available through Friday, November 20th. You may take the survey online at surveymonkey.com/r/27v6z6. Or you can email recreation@rentonwa.gov to request a copy of the survey in English, Spanish, or Vietnamese. Two, cold weather's on the way. The Public Works Department will be applying de-icer to major arterials as needed. Snow is not far away. During snow events, it is imperative that motorists do not park or abandon their vehicles within any portion of the traffic lanes. Abandoned vehicles impair snow and ice removal, impact responsive emergency vehicles, and may be towed. Please remember that during snow and ice events, the Department Sanders and Snowplows are dispatched to keep major arterials drivable. Visit our website at rentonwa.gov/snowroutes to view our de-icing and snow route maps. And finally, uh, inclement weather conditions may prevent collection of garbage, recycling, and organics. Should this occur, please remove your carts from the curb at the end of the day. Follow these guidelines. Recycling and garbage carts will be collected on the Saturday immediately following the missed collection, uh, road conditions permitting. And then organics will be collected on the next regularly scheduled collection day the following week. Uh, please visit the city's website for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, next up is audience comment.
Sorry, one second. Okay, next we will open the remote audience comment period. It remains to strong attend of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Please refer your comments to the full council. And in doing so, we ask that you refrain from impugning the integrity of the members of this body. The city reserves the right to eliminate or end these public comment periods and to remove anyone from the meeting at any point if we deem the system as being abused or is no longer suitable to allowing the city to conduct its necessary business. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by Julia Medzighian, council liaison. Ms. Medzighian will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker if you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. When your time is almost up, please wrap up your comments. Ms. Medzighian.
Thank you, Jason. For the record, my name is Julia Medzighian, City Council Liaison. No one signed up in advance to speak this evening under audience comment. For those signed into Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please use your computer to raise your hand. If you called in, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. When I call your name, please state your name and city of residence, and you'll have five minutes to address council. First, we have Nancy. Go ahead, Nancy, if you'll start by stating your full name, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Quinn, and I live in the city of Renton. And I'm just confused because there was a, a vote. Sorry, did you guys catch that? Because the timer just started.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just, I was confused by the vote that just took place. I think it was, um, Councilmember Khan that made a motion, and I did not understand what vote took place. There were almost all yays and one nay, and I'm curious as to what the rest of the vote was.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to comment?
Uh, yes, please, Jason.
So, uh, if I could, the original motion was to, uh, approve the committee report, which essentially is approving the, uh, budget items for 2021-2022. Councilmember Van made an, made a motion to amend the, essentially, the report or the budget uh, to include $50,000, uh, for the RISE program. Uh, she did not receive a second, so that motion failed. And then, the council then voted on the original motion, which was to approve the committee report, which I read. And I hope, I hope that, uh, clarifies.
Yes, that, that was, in fact, the part that I met and, uh, I missed. And thank you so much for clarifying. I would like you guys to know, I so appreciate what you do every day. And, and, um, I will just state outright that my skin is white, and I'm apparently supposed to feel guilty for that. But, um, I think it's amazing what you've done and how you've balanced this budget for this mon- for this, the next two years. What you've done is phenomenal, and thank you so much. I hope we can continue to embrace our, um, our, the people of color in our, our community. And, um, I, I feel badly that you've been so maligned. But I just want you to know, I think you're doing an amazing job. And please continue to, to work so hard for all of us. And I, I do say "all" of us. So, uh, I do believe that you're doing a, a commendable job. So, thank you so much, and, um, I'm honored to live in the city of Renton.
Okay, next we have Tree Williams. Go ahead, Tree.
Hello, council members, it's Tree Williams again. And, um, I just wanted to say that, no, you shouldn't feel bad about being white. That's ridiculous. I believe all our emotions, we want to build up black people and people of color so we all can be better as a whole. So don't ever feel bad for being white. Just feel bad for when you continue to live in your skin knowing that other people aren't receiving the same amount of benefits that you are, even when the playing field isn't fair. Now, I came on here to talk about the street mural. I'm pleading that we put Black Lives Matter on the street, straight up, period, because kids need to see, kids need to know, the community needs to know, surrounding neighborhoods need to know that moving forward, black lives really do matter on every single level. And it's that simple. And I'm not trying to sound aggressive, I'm just really passionate about it. And so, i- i- if y'all wanna think about what Black Lives Matter mean, it means the empowerment of everyone. So don't, don't feel, feel bad for having white skin, whatever the lady said before me. But, um, yeah, we all in this together. Thank you, councilman.
Okay, next we have Krista. Go ahead, Krista.
Thank you, good evening again, Mayor Pavone, President Perez, members of the council. Um, I want to thank the folks, uh, being vulnerable tonight and speaking from the heart. How valuable it is, all, how valuable it is for all of us to have insight into the lived experiences of people of color who can help us take the appropriate next steps towards becoming anti-racist and towards equity for all. Um, my comment's gonna be real brief. Um, but I can't sit here and listen to, um, I can't sit here and listen to a fellow resident call the work that's being done, um, in community in support of black lives malicious. The word I heard was "maligned." And if you look that up in the dictionary, it means evil in nature and male- malevolent. These issues will undoubtedly bring up emotions for all of us, and they should. We're all human. We're bringing our humanity to the table, and we're fighting for humanity. But let's be careful. We're fighting for equal rights, we're fighting for black lives, and no one is being maligned. Standing up for right, for what's right is not divisive. And I humbly ask people to, um, believe that black lives matter and also that our words matter. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Prianna Smith. Go ahead, Prianna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening again, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Pavone, uh, President Perez, and council members. I quote, "It is unfortunate that the Negro is being forced to fight in any way for what is due him and is freely accorded other Americans. It is unfortunate that even today, for some people, uh, should hold the erroneous idea of racial superiority despite the fact that the world is fast-moving towards an integrated humanity." This quote is from the students of the Atlanta University Center in Georgia, which was published March 1960 during the sit-ins of the Civil Rights Movement. I'm speaking again tonight to, um, bring attention again to the Black Lives Matter street mural here in Renton. We're, again, fighting for the acknowledgement that black lives matter. And again, um, I just want to bring attention to that. And I hope that you consider it, um, as official city business. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Please raise your hand.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Uh, next up, we have the consent agenda. We have 12 items for the council to consider.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Perez.
I move that the council concur with the council agenda as published.
I second. Yes, it's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the council concur with the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Van.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurbin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Legislation, we do have some legislation today.
Okay, we have, uh, I believe, seven ordinances for first reading. First one is regarding, uh, docket item from, uh, uh, regarding waived fees. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41210 of the Renton Municipal Code related to waived fees, lifting the waived fees moratorium established by Ordinance 5973, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember McGurbin.
I move that the, uh, ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember McGurbin, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the ordinance be put on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding the 2021-2022 piped utility rates. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 822G, section 823, subsection 8424A, sections 8431 and 8515 of the Renton Municipal Code, establishing piped utility rates for 2021 and 2022, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the ordinance as read.
Second. Uh, I think we need to put it on second and final reading for... Oh, thank you. Yes, we should.
I, I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council men- uh, meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the ordinance be put on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the next ordinance is regarding, uh, 2021-2022 solid waste rates. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 8110 of the Renton Municipal Code, establishing the 2021 and 2022 solid waste collection services rates uh, for all customer classes, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
Let's see if I can get it right this time. I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Okay. It's been moved by, uh, Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Nay, motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding the 2021 property tax substantial need.
ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding, uh, the 2021 property tax levy. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year 2021 for general city operational purposes in the amount of $22,705,92, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Then moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding the 2021 property tax percentage increase. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the dollar amount and percentage e- increase for the property tax to be levied for the year 2021, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding, uh, the 2021 property tax levy. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year 2021 for general city operational purposes in the amount of $22,705,92, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to mute myself. I apologize. I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember, Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final ordinance is regarding the budget for 2021-2022. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting the biennial budget for year, for the years 2021-2022 in the amounts of $248,995,124 and $258,462,306 respectively, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Council, Councilmember Prince, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I guess there's no discussion, but I would just like to repeat for the record that, uh, I motion to amend the biennial budget by adding the RISE program, uh, to be funded, uh, as an item at a minimal, um, at a nominal amount of $50,000.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is new business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't catch, was that, uh, ki- uh, did, did all council members vote in favor of the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. You got this.
Well, one aye, one nay.
That's, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, up next is new business. Council President Perez. Maybe you can unmute button.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on Monday, November 9, 2020, at 6:00 PM, um, we will not have Committee of the Whole, I'm sorry, uh, because we already finished our council, our budget deliberations, so I am announcing that on Monday, November 9, at 6:00 PM, uh, the Committee of the Co- so the Committee of the Whole will be canceled, and on Monday, November 9, 2020, at 7:00 PM, the city council meeting will be, eh, be a video conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any new business, but I just wanted to, um, state a comment, uh, as I have this opportunity here, that our budget is a value statement. I know that some of our council members have mentioned that previously, and certainly us, uh, passing the Renton Business Plan that we look to, uh, bringing about equitable outcomes for all, and that certainly, um, the budget is a value statement, so I look forward to the future amendments that we'll be having. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurbin.
Uh, yes, Ms. Mayor, I don't have any new business, but I did also really quickly, and we, we're gonna vote on it next week, so I can state my comments for them, um, but I do wanna say that I, I look forward to the continuing, this is an incomplete budget. Um, you know, we are gonna continue this dialogue, and I, I just wanna re- reinforce that message to the community, that I, I look forward to voting on Councilmember Van's motion to fund that program once we've created it, set it up, and hopefully even add an extra zero to that motion, um, but that, I don't know that we're ready for that yet, so, but I do wanna reiterate that, um, you know, this is an incomplete process, and that I think that I, at least for one, am committed to, to continuing this conversation, that today is not a, an end point, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McGurbin. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee actually does have some new business. On Monday, November 9, 2020, at 3:30 PM, via a video conference, the Finance Committee will be meeting. We have 11 items on the agenda. Um, Symmetrical Stop-Loss Contract, Kaiser Permanency Contract, SNAP Benefits Amendment, Best Start for Kids Grant Extension, Amending RMC 5-1 and 5-11, Network Systems Analyst Hire at M34 Step E, uh, KCFCD Madison Creek, uh, Project Grant Agreement, KCFCD Monroe Storm System Project Grant, KCFCD Flood Reduction Grant for Monroe, Vouchers, and Emerging Issues in Finance. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Corman.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do wanna thank, uh, Councilmember McGurbin for his comments, and just express that I'm in agreement with those comments, and I, I know, uh, other council members are as well. Um, and then, a couple of items, I first need to announce a Planning and Development Committee meeting. Um, it's going to be a video conference, eh, for, it's on 5, at 5:00 PM on November 9. Two items on that agenda, the first is AT- ADU Fee Schedule Resolution, uh, second item is Emerging Issues in CED, um, and then the second one, and I apologize for not contacting you in, in advance, I don't wanna take anybody by surprise, but, um, I, I've heard that the, um, that, that, that some of the people at our airport are still a little nervous that in the midst of all the budget discussions, uh, they're, they're still trying to run businesses at the airport, and some of them have asked for some status, and, um, Mr. Mayor, I understand we're, we're, if I understand correctly, I think we're getting close to interviewing for the Renton Airport Director. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, and, and I guess, um, I think it's fair to say, uh, that, um, we're, we're, we're doing, we're doing the, the technical work as we've told the, um, you know, as we've to- spoke about at RAC before, too, we're still, um, questioning the classification of that airport, and I, I think the new airport director will be part of that, uh, approach that we're using, um, or will be involved in it, um, and I just, I wanted to make sure people knew that, um, through, um, a scheduling conflict, uh, both I and, uh, and, um, Councilmember McGurbin were, were tied up in a, a Renton Fire Authority meeting and couldn't make the last RAC meeting, uh, and I think there was a, a little bit of concern afterwards, um, but I just wanted to express that we're very committed, as we have expressed already, to RAC, uh, on that topic. So, um, thank you for that, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next up, uh, yes, Council President Perez, would you like to announce our executive session? You're muted, Council President.
I, I don't know if I should apologize anymore, just, that's all that, I just, I, I, I think, no, I am very challenged, yes, and so, um, uh, it, okay, so I move that the council, uh, recess, uh, for executive session to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 423110, subsection 1I, um, for approximately 30 minutes. There were not, there are not gonna be actions taken during this, uh, executive session, and the council meeting will be adjourned after the meeting.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the council move to executive session for 30 minutes, no action will be taken, and we will adjourn directly after. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you.